This is Sarah Mallis, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a hybrid meeting. I will call the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order at 7:01 PM on Wednesday, June 21st. I have with me in the room Brian Solace, John Benares, James Mitchell, Catherine Howe, and Sean Son. We will begin the meeting this evening with Four North Street. Four North Street is a combination of a new application and a continuance of the hearing from last month. I will open the public hearing for the application of Todd Peratore, TJP Design Group LLC, on behalf of Susan King for a variance under sections 12.4.6 and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and to open the continued public hearing for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary for the replacement of an existing detached garage and build a new attached garage such that the new garage will be moved south by four feet, increase the distance to the real lot line to one foot, and west four feet, increase the distance to the side setback to five feet, four inches, thereby increasing the footprint by one foot, six inches in width and three foot, six inches in length at Four North Street, Assessors' map number 51, lot number 21, District D. The application for the variance was filed with the town clerk on May 24, 2023, and the application for a special permit was filed with the town clerk on March 28, 2023. Todd, are you prepared to present this application? You're muted. Yeah. You're unmuted.
Hopefully you can hear me.
Yeah. Do you need to show your screen?
I do not.
Okay.
All right, so if you can hear me or I'm going to put those down.
Okay.
All right, so as we discussed last time, we have a non-conforming garage that's in disrepair. We can't fit, I can't see them, get myself here, give me a moment. All right. Sorry, give me one moment. All right, so what we did in response to what we discussed last time, we moved the garage forward and back and out in order to increase the rear setback to actually one foot. We also officially made it connected and applied for a variance. We, as we discussed also last time, there's really no viable alternative for another rotation for an attached garage. I mean, we're not making the condition worse. I mean, I think it's pretty much clear what we're asking for. So I figure I could probably just leave it at that. Aside from my gymbug.
So do people have questions?
What were the conditions we asked them to come back to amend?
So the problem we had was that with a detached garage, the setbacks are smaller. So the detached garage on the side meant the setbacks, but on the rear it did not. And so it was, I think the rear was .93 from the lot line, and now it's one foot. And so they moved the garage forward to pull it out of the real lot line, a miniscule amount, and they moved it to the left to pull it away from, to decrease the encroachment on the side setback.
I just told her.
Yeah.
And since we're attaching it, we fell out of, we were no longer an accessory structure, so we got rid of the variance.
And he also said in his write-up that they couldn't put a door between the detached garage and the mudroom because it's only one foot, nine inches wide, so there was no room for a door. So the only way to have the direct access was to connect it. And it looks to me like it's right up against that brick patio.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Looks good.
Any questions, Brian?
I don't know.
Jim?
No, this is what we asked for.
Catherine?
I don't have any questions.
John? With that, I will see if there's members of the public who would like to ask a question. Mr. Gates, would you please state your name and address?
Timothy Gates, 2 Desmond Avenue. I find it incomprehensible to accept these sketch drawings by an unprofessional person who did not seek out the still-standing surveyor's marks and work from those, but appears to have gone around sort of bent over with a yardstick, taking little marks. And one long line. Mrs. Susan King has included in her deed the dimensions of the survey that applies to that northern boundary. And it's also in her mortgage. And I don't think her mortgage would like to accept this plan reducing the scope of their interest in the land underlying the plot. We know from our sketch here that certain distances have been measured from an incorrect sketch. There is a survey mark behind the garage from the Goots' recent survey. And the line goes right through the mudroom, which was built in the spring when Lisa King first bought the property. And my mother used this house as a summer residence and has been a festering sore that the mudroom extended into her property from 1983. It was done while she was not in state. And it's been a festering sore continually trying to get Lisa King to agree on to change the boundaries. And she's always said, "I'm not going to do anything about it, leave it to the next people." The Begin Brothers, who were trust administrators, refused to do anything about it. But it was in the deed that they had drawn up for this sale to Susan King. And why Susan King is trying to change that survey with this sketchy plan, I do not know. And I think the both the plans before and after, which have now a new addition, identified of the sea level elevations. And I'm disputing each of the plans, the before and the after, as being irrelevant because they're incorrect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gates. You've made your point. I took the liberty to go on to the registry of deeds and pulled off the A&R that was approved in 1976. And from what I can tell, the measurements on that A&R agree with the measurements on this plan that we've received.
As I said, the mark from the survey that Goots does is right behind the existing garage and goes right through the corner of the mudroom.
Thank you. The mudroom and the garage have been existing for some period of time. The, hold it. The request they're making is not going further into the setback. So it's a grandfathered, non-conforming structure, and they have a right.
It is a active dispute from 20, no, 40 years.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gates. That's not an issue for the Zoning Board of Appeals to deal with. That is an issue you would need to take to the land court.
Land Court?
The land court. We can't, we can't resolve it.
May I speak to him?
Very briefly, because we heard from you last meeting.
My husband is not an owner of the property. He's speaking us, he received a letter and ourselves because we are within the certain feet, whatever, from the house. We live on Desmond and School.
So how do you have the right to dispute the boundary?
And I've been trustee with my sons for this property because both of our sons own the property that Mrs. King, now with all other previous Mrs. Kings, but they're not related from what we found out, so we never asked for abatements. I discussed it after you suggested at the last meeting that you cannot deal with this yourselves, and we agreed. That's true. So you suggested that maybe Mrs. King and we can talk outside, which we did. I gave Mrs. King all the records we had, the letter of my mother's in law. I gave her a copy of the photograph that we had taken of the post of the surveyor, which was done two years ago. I gave her a photograph to see that Mrs. King, Lisa King, Elizabeth, had done just a few years before she died. And the post, I have it here, the photograph, if you want to see it, is right in the middle of her back entry, that little room that she had built. And so it's not something that we make up or it's not something that we ask for compensations. It's not that we are asking for abatements. There is a law that if Mr., whoever is the designer, who designed these records, he signed as a designer, that's why I called him designer, has any idea, we checked. You don't even need lawyers to do this. If Mrs. King would like for $1 to, what we asked, not to get our land back, just to make a straight line, so we don't have to deal anymore with this horrible situation that nobody wants, she doesn't want, we don't want. For $1 herself and $1 myself, we can come together and file to the deed to create a line.
Okay, that is perfectly fine. But that is not something to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
But then we can be negative to the petition of Mrs. King at this point because we are asking us to.
Not during the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Why not?
Because we are only looking with respect, applications submitted for a variance and the footprint of this proposed building do not go more into the setback than the existing buildings. And we're dealing with existing, non-conforming structure. And anybody has a right to rebuild an existing, non-conforming structure.
We don't argue with this. We don't have anything to do with this. She can do whatever she wants in her property as structure goes. We're saying, how can anyone allow a structure to go on without boundaries being correct? You are looking for the property, you decide.
That's not our purview.
Right, it's not something that's before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So where do we go for it?
I suggest you contact an attorney and deal with it.
No, attorneys, we contacted, and that was Mrs. King's attorney, and gave us the same answer, that's how it was, and that's what stayed. And I have his record, I have it all in emails. So I don't understand why something will go on wrongly for perpetuity. And the town even record has the land that Mrs. King, now King and before King, all have it in their property, which is ours. And I don't want ours to show that it's theirs.
The GIS lines are not accurate. They're not accurate.
Well, it's in our deeds and our plans to the deeds when they were filed, the exact plan.
Okay.
With surveyors and everything.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I really understand why you're frustrated. I think this is an extremely frustrating situation.
How many strange to me?
I'm sorry?
It's very strange to me.
I understand. It seems very visiting that we can't just fix it here while we're dealing with the rest of the situation. But it's just the way the process works. We're not trying to be dismissive of you. We actually don't have the power to change.
So I can come to you because we're going to extend our home with wrong lines, and you can okay our building that we would like to extend, even though the line is not correct with the neighbor.
We, I'm sorry, but the lines that are on this plan we received agree with the A&R that was filed in 1976.
They don't. How come surveyors two years ago, not even ourselves, had their line right where it was in 76?
I'm not, I can't speak to somebody else's survey. I can't speak to that.
So somebody went out and did the survey and filed it, and then it makes all the others previously wrong, even though we have lived there for 40 years.
I'm sorry, I can't speak to that.
Even if it is wrong, we can't fix it, that's what we're telling you. Even if it is wrong, it's not our power to fix it.
I mean, Mrs. King said, "I don't want to go to court to spend money with lawyers and everything." We don't want either. We want a solution to just make this mess right.
Well, the solution doesn't lie here.
We don't have the solution.
We can't fix it for you.
So if you don't go to court and lawyers, where do you go? In this town hall, in this committee, what committee? Defense committee?
No, there is no committee.
So that means you can do anything you want if you have a wrong plan?
The planning board approved an A&R in 1976.
Yes.
And the measurements on that A&R agree with the measurements on this plan.
So our measurements are wrong, even though it's our plan?
I don't know.
We don't know.
This is our survey that they talk about. It wasn't anybody else's.
I'm sorry, but I'm not going to discuss this anymore.
So do you want to verify the survey for ours, there in our property?
No, that's not, it's not before us.
Why not? Because it's not a survey that they filed. They filed our own survey. That survey was ours.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Gates. You've had your chance to speak. And this line of discussion unfortunately is not within the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So we are silenced without anything?
I can't solve your problem.
Yeah.
We can't solve your problem, and I'm sorry you have a problem.
I'm sorry, but I want to have that in detail telling me so I can understand that maybe I'm not intelligent enough. We have a deed, we have a deed.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We have a deed and a plan that they filed, which is ours in 76. And you're telling us it's wrong, and you say it's right to them. But we have the same plan.
She never said it was wrong.
With all due respect, I know neither one of you want to spend money with an attorney, but that's where it's going to lie. Okay?
Isn't that sad?
It's unfortunate.
It's sad.
It's unfortunate.
There's literally nothing we can do about this.
But you're agreeing that it's a survey done in 76, which is right, which is ours.
We're not agreeing that it's not right.
That's why you go by.
We're just agreeing that that's what the paper trail says.
You go by.
And you go by the file papers.
I'm saying that the measurements on the A&R in 1976 agree with the measurements that are on this piece of paper.
That's ours. Did you measure when you went to survey the deed?
You don't do that.
Well, that's why you don't know that it's not right.
I'm sorry, but I can't continue this conversation anymore. We have a full docket tonight.
I know.
And you've had your opportunity to speak, and we've repeatedly said unfortunately, it's not a matter properly before the ZVA. And I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to?
I oppose to have a building on top of that garage in this case.
A building on top of a garage?
If they build anything on top of the garage, I oppose.
That's your, that's your right.
Sure. It would have to, it would have to be.
Do you have a new hearing and this?
Yes.
We can't rule on speculation.
So.
Okay, we can only rule on what's before us.
Right. But they all say garage is what they built, so I oppose if they built on top of it.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? Do we want to impose a condition that the garage can't be built on top of?
Is that, is that sure? If, is that what she was saying?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not understanding that.
Second level on the garage. See, the issue we have is that the existing garage was a detached garage, which has different setbacks from an attached garage. And the reason I think is probably because of potential for adding a second floor on top of an attached garage. So I believe Mrs. Gates is saying she would be upset if a second floor was added on top of the garage. We could put a condition in our variance that a second floor can't be built if that's something we want to do. It's not something we normally do.
Yeah.
But we'd be, we're approving a garage here. We have a proposal in front of us. It doesn't include a second floor.
Right, but we can put conditions on it. We can put conditions on it. Because it went from a detached to an attached, we could put a condition on it that you can't put living quarters on second floor of the garage.
If we approve this as a variance and someone, another owner or Mrs. King, comes before us to add on a second floor, doesn't that require?
A special permit.
A special permit.
Yeah.
So it's not automatic.
Right, correct. That's correct.
That's what I, so you may or may not have to put it into the decision since it's covered under. Yeah, because it still requires going to court.
We're voting on one garage.
Yes.
Style here. Now, down the road, it's going to have to come before us again anyway.
Yes. And that would be a time for you to raise your objections.
To the height.
To the height. There's enough checks and balances in the current process that won't allow that, so.
Okay.
At least by right, so I don't think we need to condition her.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board?
Can I just ask, since I wasn't here during the first meeting, am I voting on this tonight? Or?
It's a new variance, right? I was here when we heard it before.
Who else wasn't here?
I was here.
You were here.
I was here.
I was, I was with you. I was here.
Okay, so you not want to vote on it?
I don't mind voting, I'm just asking as a procedural question.
You're allowed to miss one meeting, and the minutes were released.
And the content was essentially the same as today's?
No, I'm fine with the application, so I vote.
You ready for me to make a motion?
We're ready. I'm ready.
I move to close the public hearing and the continued public hearing and approve the application of Todd Peratore, TJP Design Group LLC, on behalf of Susan King for a variance to replace the existing detached garage with an attached garage based on the determination that a variance is required, not a special permit, since the setback requirements are greater for an attached garage than those for an existing detached garage. Based on a finding that owing to the circumstances related to the shape of the lot, especially affecting such land, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship by not allowing a garage large enough to house a vehicle and with insufficient space to allow an exterior door egress from the garage, it would involve substantial hardship if the garage is not directly attached, the existing mudroom, for direct egress from the garage into the mudroom at Four North Street, Assessors' map number 51, lot number 21, and District D, filed with the town clerk on May 24, 2023, based on the following conditions. The new garage footprint will be moved four feet south to increase the distance to the real lot line from .93 feet to one foot. The new garage footprint will be moved four feet west to decrease the distance from the side setback from 6.84 feet to 5.25 feet. The footprint of the garage may increase 1.5 feet in width and 3.5 feet in length for an overall dimension of 15 feet, 6 inches by 23 feet, sufficient to accommodate a single vehicle. The proposed garage shall be located as depicted on the proposed site plan provided by J. Giraud, dated May 19, '23. The proposed garage shall be constructed substantially as depicted on the plans prepared by TJP Design Group LLC, dated 5/19/23. A110 proposed floor plan. A210 proposed south elevation. A220 proposed east, north, and west elevations. Does that sound good? Do I have a second?
Second.
Jane, a second, second. Any discussion? I'll take a vote of the five full members. Brian?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Does anybody want to write it?
I'll write it.
John will write.
I'll review.
Brian will review.
Someone's called me up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Unless you're my phone silence.
I had my phone on and my watch went.
The next application is for Four Butler Ave. I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc., on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli for a special permit under sections 10.1, 12.5, and 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw, under other relief as may be necessary, to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot, add additional levels for additional living space, and adjusting the footprint, which will result in it encroaching an additional .1 foot into the west side setback and adding a deck which will encroach an additional .4 feet into the setback at Four Butler's Avenue, Assessors' map number 1, lot number 33, and District B, filed with the town clerk on May 15, 2023. Is Mr. Stein on?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. May I share my screening?
You should be all set.
Says it's disabled. Yeah, still disabled.
Is it still disabled?
Yes.
Does anybody know what I did?
Did you click on his face?
Yeah. I went into him, and I said, "Make..." He's got, you've got co-host provisions.
There's green. Oh, there we go now. All right. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. My name is Brian Stein from BDS Design, representing Joe and Elise Campanelli. As I remember, we saw last night at the site visit, we have an existing non-conforming house with Four Butler Ave that is also in a flood zone. We are proposing to, it's an existing split-level house. There was an existing garage on the lowest level with about elevation 10. In its previous life, previous owner converted that garage to living space. The main first floor of the house is at about elevation 13, which is off the front entry of the home. So we essentially have a split level, and then there's another level above the garage currently. So what we are proposing to do, what we have to do, is raise the main level of the house that's currently at elevation 13 to elevation 14 to meet flood regulations. to elevation 14 to meet flood regulations. The owners would like to convert the existing garage, or the, the existing living space, there was a garage, back into a garage. And then we're proposing to add, um, a couple of levels of living space above the kind of current level. So again, it's a split level and it will maintain a split level. Uh, so we are adding a level above the existing elevation 13 and above the existing garage space. So I'll just go through floor plans. Uh, so this garage and garage level plan shows the garage and mechanical room. Uh, then, then the existing crawl space that's underneath the current main level of the home, uh, that will essentially remain. The next level is the entry level and then the level above the garage, um, which is about a half, half level up. And then again, the upper levels include just basically bedroom space for master suite and two other bedrooms. The sorry, the existing existing home is just not quite adequate for the growing family, so the proposed is, is, will provide much, a fair amount more space for them. The proposed is about 25 hundred square feet of living space. The, uh, the other portion of this is adding a deck off the rear of the home that, you know, which allowed them to have outdoor access from main living space and then down a set of stairs into the yard. The current non-conformity is across the, uh, I'll call it the north, north side of the house, which is about eight and a half or nine feet away from the property line depending on which corner you take it from. The, the existing house is twisted ever so slightly against the property line, which is why, you know, to bring the deck off straight from the existing house, we're .1 feet farther into the setback than the current condition. Getting to the elevation, there was a question was asked at the site visit last night that, uh, you know, wondered how much farther we were going up from the existing home. You can kind of see here the existing is dashed in red.
Can you see that, James?
Yeah, that's helpful.
Okay.
So on the, in this drawing, the left side, the west side, which is the current garage side of the home, we are about 13 and a half feet higher in that respect, and then on the other side towards, towards the street, we're about 11 feet higher. And this just, I'm just gonna go around sides here. This is the front of the home off the street. Um, so the existing roof line of the, uh, main level of the home and then the level behind it, excuse me. This is the existing north elevation or the proposed elevation with the existing shown in red. And then the rear for west elevation. So really, we're adding a level on each portion of the house. This is really what it comes down to. Along with the deck in the rear. Uh, one question that was raised by the abutter at number six uh, was the impact that it would have on sunlight throughout the year. We fortunately had this modeled in Revit and I asked one of my staff to model as close as we could the, the house at 6 Butler Ave based on photographs. So we, we took photo, or not photos, but we did, um, sun studies based on its GPS location um, for various times throughout the year, basically at the solstices, so. And, you know, various times throughout the day, 8:00 AM, noon, 2:00 and 4:00. Uh, at 8:00 AM, you know, on, in March and basically September 21st, the eastern sun is obviously casting a longer shadow towards the backyard, so the front of the houses are are indirect sun. As you come around, at noon, the new home casts a bit of a shadow, you know, on the very bottom of the home at 6:00. Um, at 2 o'clock, you know, again, on the bottom of the home at 6:00. And then, uh, you know, at 4:00 PM, both, you know, both sides are on the eastern shade, but there's a relatively minimal shadow on the kind of eastern side of, of the house of number 6. In the summer, they have a little bit better condition, no shadow cast at 8:00. Really minimal at noon because the sun is so far, uh, high in the air and pretty vertical from the house. 2:00 PM, kind of the same thing, almost, and then, um, at 4:00, it's been around to the west enough that it has cast a shadow, you know, on, on number 6. Uh, and then in the winter is, you know, probably the worst case out of all of them. Uh, again, it, early in the morning doesn't really affect it, noon affects it a little bit, casts a bit of a shadow, um, on the south side of number 6. And then at, uh, you know, 2:00 and 4:00, again, it casts a better shadow onto, onto number 6 there, so. Hopefully, those studies are helpful. You know, we have the survey that shows how far off each house is from the property line, so the distance between the two is accurate based on the survey. And, um, we were, you know, probably a bit conservative in the height of the other house, so. You know, these, these are quite accurate, um, in terms of, in terms of the shadows and sunlight that, uh, that will happen. Overall, we don't feel that this addition is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. We feel it's in scale with a number of other homes, including on the corner of, on the corner of Butler Ave and, um, and 127 and, or I'm sorry, yeah, Shore Road and, uh, also the house next door number 6, which is in the same scale as what we're proposing here is, along with a couple others across the street. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
It looks like there's quite a bit of room in the lot. Is there a reason why you can't go out instead of up?
Yeah, there's some reason, we're, we're not too far off a 50-foot no build, um, in terms of wetlands and conservation. There's also a bit of a septic in the back there that, uh, we would be encroaching on, which I'll, I can show you in a sec here. We have our existing, you know, septic tank and so forth, which isn't too far away, we have to be, um, you know, minimum 10 feet from that. And we're just being encroaching even further into the, into the wetland buffer. Uh, also, part of that is, uh, for cost reasons, we're trying to stay essentially on the same footprint as, I'm, you know, I'm sure you know, increasing footprint and site costs and foundation costs and so forth is fairly expensive than trying to keep, you know, your foundation and building off of that, so. That was, those are two, the two main reasons for that.
Can, can you also speak to how this qualifies as a two and a half story and not a three story?
Given the, given the split level and the, and the dormers, I mean, we're, we're under the height restriction, uh, first of all, and, you know, we have garage space around living space up on the first floor. And, you know, we have dormers in that third floor. And, you know, we have a fair amount of it, well, only a fair, only some of it's in dormant space and then there's a fair amount of it's not dormant.
Are the, um, lower, are the garage walls four feet underground?
Uh, no, they are not.
So they don't qualify, it doesn't qualify as a half story?
Right.
Um, is the third floor have four-foot-high walls?
And some of it, yes.
Well, what about that central part? That looks like a full three stories to me.
Which, which part?
The flat roof.
Right here? That's a stairwell.
I don't care, it's part of the house.
That's only, that's only over, that's only over a small portion of it.
But it looks like it's three stories.
I don't believe it's three stories, no.
Well, there's the level, the middle level and the top level. Wait.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't see how this qualifies as a two and a half story house. And even if you're within the height limit, you have to be a two and a half story house, not a three story.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, I, I.
Because.
We don't have enough information.
Because you, you have, you have to take the entire footprint. So we only have that partial story over, over the left side, in this case, the left side here. Whereas we've only got, we don't have the full three stories over the entire footprint.
I don't think that matters.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, it does. It absolutely does, you take, you take the whole footprint and it's a percentage of that footprint. It's not just the section that it's over.
Have you provided that information to us?
I can. I mean, it's pretty, well, build a floor plan. It's a, it's a, what's the percentage, it's like, you know.
I, I don't see that on the section over the garage, that that top level has only four-foot-high walls.
But it's not just that, it's a, it's a percentage of the footprint over the entire home.
Yeah, but what, what I'm reacting to is, our bylaw says it cannot exceed two and a half stories. The house, it doesn't say a percentage of the house, it says a house cannot exceed two and a half stories.
But it defines, it defines a half story.
Yes, and it has to be, uh, for a level not to be considered a first floor, it has to be buried four feet in the ground.
Yeah.
So the garage would have to be buried four feet in the ground or it's considered a level. And the top floor has to have walls that are only four feet high. And I just, I don't have enough information, but I don't see that here, but I could be wrong.
Right, but I believe it, it also talks about a, a percentage of the overall area.
Our bylaw does not.
So I guess dealt with this on, uh, on Bennett Street and it talked about, there were, there, I know Paul, I know Paul and I talked about it, the percentage of area.
Page 25.
But I, I can get that, I thought.
She's looking it up in the code right now, Brian.
She's saying height regulations. No structure shall be erected or altered so that it exceeds two and a half stories. Or that it exceeds the 35 feet. There's nothing about saying, it says chimney, spires, or towers. Yeah, and it's whichever is lesser, so it doesn't say that you can take an average of what's there, it says it can't exceed two and a half stories.
Right.
From the mean construction grade.
Right.
Yeah, well, how's that defined, Catherine?
A half story.
Well, the stone story is not the construction grade.
A half story is defined as a story with a sloping roof, the area of which at a height of four feet above the floor does not exceed two-thirds of the floor area of the story immediately below it.
Correct.
Yeah, but that still has to be four-foot-high walls.
Yep.
But, but again, it's about the overall area below it, which involves the entire footprint in this case. It's not just the area below the wall.
They're two separate requirements.
There's, yeah, it has to be, the walls can't be more than four-foot-high. Four feet count as part of that.
No, that's not how it reads.
But it sounds like it, it can be as long as it's not more than two-thirds of the entire structure.
No, it has to be both, sure, has to be both. Four feet. The walls can't exceed four feet. And the area on that floor with the four-foot walls can't exceed, exceed two-thirds of the square footage of the floor below it. Right?
It's not really.
No, if, if you, if you have, if you have walls at four feet, right, and it basically, in this case, that strip, this kind of long gable piece can't exceed two-thirds of the whole area.
No.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, James.
Brian, what is the height of the knee walls in the master bedroom portion?
About six.
Okay, so it exceeds the four-foot that we would be at.
Right. But, so this whole area can't exceed two-thirds of the rest.
I'm not sure if that's how we're interpreting the, the bylaw.
No, no, I think, I think we need more information
I think.
as to the height of the walls in each of the floors. Because we don't have sufficient information to make a determination.
Good boy.
Do people agree with that?
Well, there's some vagueness here.
Yeah.
Well, it says it, it can't exceed four feet high.
No, it's, no, that's not what it says.
Yes, it does.
No.
No, I think. The roof above cannot exceed four feet. Can you give them that section so they can see themselves?
No. A half story is defined as a story with a sloping roof, the area of which at a height of four feet above the floor does not exceed two-thirds of the floor of the story immediately before.
Right, it doesn't say you can't have more than four-foot walls.
You're reading the same.
Because. Yeah.
I think he's okay, but I don't get the whole of this one.
I, I think that we need.
We can provide the calc.
We need more information as to the walls in this height situation.
That, that's fine, we can do the calc of, of everything.
I, I think, in my opinion, I think they're okay because it's not the entire third floor. That's how I'm reading that.
It's a full third floor. That middle section doesn't, doesn't have a sloping roof. That makes it a third, three floors, three floors.
Right, but I think this other part of the house, they're safe though.
Yeah, but you can't, because of different roof lines, you can't extrapolate across the whole front.
That's why the, that's why the percentage is there, that's why the two-thirds is there, you can have part of it, you know, exceeding a certain, a certain story versus the rest of it.
But it's not all on the same floor, Brian.
I understand.
So you can't count it if it's not on the same floor.
That's why I talked about the area, the whole area.
You can't count it if it's not on the same floor.
Well, it talks about the area below it, it's not, it's not the, it's not just the, quote-unquote, the third floor.
The same floor.
It's the area below it.
Floor below.
Yeah, but he's trying to use the square footage of the section that isn't three stories.
I, I've actually, I've actually talked with Paul about this on another project, um, previously, maybe a year ago, and, uh, he, he agrees, the whole area of the floor or the, the house below it, it's not just the area immediately below this section of the house, if you will.
Well, I, I think.
It's spelled out as floor.
What?
It's spelled out as floor. On the bylaw.
Yeah, but they have different floors on this plan, it's, it's not all one floor.
No, I'm, I'm referencing the floor. No, you have to deal with the floors that are in that, that section, not the rest of the building.
Section. Right, right.
No, it's the rest of the building.
I, I think that we need calculations.
What are you asking him to calculate?
We have no idea what the height of the walls are in these various floors.
Why does it matter?
We have no dimensions.
Why does it matter?
Because of the bylaw.
Where is it, where is it? I've been looking through here and I, I can't see the one.
Page 25.
Do you have the new bylaws?
Yeah, I have the new bylaws.
5.5, 5.5.
Page 26 at the bottom, section 5.5, height regulations. And it's like the last sentence at the bottom of that page. And it is a, a bit ambiguous.
Because my understanding, you have to have the sloping roof down to the floor, so I don't know.
A half story is defined as a story with a sloping roof.
It, the four feet is the, the area, the, the point at which you determine the area.
Well, I.
So in this case, in this case, we have to determine that whole upper area.
Okay, I, I wanna move off of this point.
Do we have a sloping roof throughout the whole section?
I don't know, we don't have the calculation, we don't have the information.
No, we do, you do.
Except for the stairwell.
If you look at the south elevation, you, you're seeing a sloping roof.
But you don't know what's over the, you don't know what's over the ceiling. Is there a ceiling in that?
I'm, I'm just telling you, I see a sloping roof and there's, there's dormer and windows.
One or two question we haven't asked us.
But if it's an attic, it doesn't count. We don't know what's in there. We need the information, is what I'm saying.
Are you concerned that the, the bedroom space, which is below the peak art, is not covered with the ceiling, but it goes, goes all the way up to the roof?
I don't know, Jim. We don't have that information.
Well, help me out here. How, is this two and a half stories or thirty-five feet? Whichever is lesser.
Right, right, the lesser.
So.
So he's meeting the thirty-five feet. But I'm not confident that they're meeting the two and a half stories. The way it looks, it doesn't appear to me be two and a half stories. It appears to be three stories. If you look at that garage, the garage counts as a story because it's not four feet underground, so it's not a basement. And so it looks like that's three stories.
It's not living space, so.
But if you look at this.
Doesn't matter.
If you look at this west elevation, you have the garage as one floor, then there's that floor.
Then that's a third floor.
There's a third, but you see the, the roof comes down.
But we don't, we don't know what's up there.
Well, it told us those knee walls are six feet.
Yeah.
Right, they're not four feet.
No, they're not. So we have to count that whole area there.
In that section, but not the rest of the.
You have to look, because it's a split level, you have to look at each section separately.
Exactly, that's what I was saying the same time.
You can't, you can't borrow stuff from another side when it's not.
This is really the contention about, well, they're both three stories, yeah.
And this one. This one's fine.
Would it be helpful if we got the information from Paul Orlando on where he made a ruling?
No. No, we, we need the information from Brian Stein and the calculations and I'll go to town council.
Ms. Michael?
So what's the sections?
What?
Need some sections. Sections and calculations.
Thank you, okay. Sections and calculations, okay.
Continuum?
Any other, no, we haven't taken public comment or anything yet. Any other questions for the board?
No.
No, I know. What happened to Sean?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Uh, I know the neighbors at the site visit last night expressed a concern about shadows. And I think Brian's done a commendable job of showing shadow studies at different times of the year. And it looks like the impact, with the exception of the winter, is pretty minimal. The only thing that would be helpful, and I'm not asking him to do more work, would be if he had a model of the existing house so he could see what the shadows were versus the proposed. But when you look at what he's done for studies, it, it, it makes a compelling argument that it has a very small impact on loss of sunlight. I'm just going by what I see on the page. In the winter, I can, I can agree that there's more because the sun's lower. There's more of an impact. But I do, I do find that to be helpful and hopefully it was helpful for you as well.
Because we live there and I know the shadows.
Excuse me, wait till you're called up. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this application? If so, state your name and address.
Sure. Am I up?
Yeah.
My name is Jeff O'Farrell. We live at ten, it's one way, one way. Um, with a six-foot rav. And I personally want to say to these guys that we're totally here to support them. We don't, we're not here to have them not be able to do their dream house, you know. We do the same thing. We get it. And I just, that's like first and foremost, you know. I, I hate being here. I, you know, I, I've been through this a couple of times and I've had people, you know, and I, I don't, we're reasonable and we would never be here if we didn't think it was a, a real issue for us. And the, the main issue is the light. I, I know, like, what he said at certain times, that there, that the, that are, we're most concerned about, so it's the sun facing side of the house. So they, these houses are, their setback is eight and ours is thirteen. That's twenty-one feet. And they, they, it's gonna go way up. It already, we already have very limited sun, direct sunlight. So like what he was saying, and I can, and I even, you know, we reached out to Joe the other day. We, we got the plans on Monday. And so it's kind of a little bit, time for us to go back and forth.
Can you mention the area of, sorry, my name's Holly, I'm sorry. But the area most affected and where we live, our kitchen and dining area is, is that, is that area right next to the house in the back. Uh, I don't know, but it's, you know, like in the winter, obviously, it's most affected, but I would have to look better at these drawings, but that's, basically, that's where we live, you know. So we look at the side of their house through the windows of that room already.
I, I, I think we ought to.
We have some lived guy.
I think we ought to speak to his study because I don't think it's correct. I understand that's, you know, it's a really nice presentation, but what he said at certain times of the day, that there's no obstruction, there's already obstruction. What? All the time. There's, there's a few.
Yeah, because, I mean, well, I mean, it's, it's just tough because that's, that back portion of the house is, like I said, our kitchen, dining, living area. If it was bedrooms or bathrooms, I wouldn't, I wouldn't care. But it's, you know, we look from our kitchen and dining, when we look toward the sun, you know, the south facing side of our house, where I kind of have all my plants, uh, we look at the side of their house, which is, you know, twenty, something feet or less. Asshole.
The, the thing is, and I also, you know, I reached out to Joe yesterday in the morning and said, you know, I thought that the architect was gonna come and take a look, because I think it would be really helpful. And also, and I'm so happy Joe came over and looked at, and he agreed, like, you know, it's very close and of course, there's gonna be major, when you go up as, as high as they are, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be seventy percent less light and I, I, you know. And I would love to do a stu-, I would like, love the, have the ability to do a study, but I, I, I hope we don't even have to go there. I just want, like, to be heard that, like, is there any other, and I wish it was before this process, before they're this far down the road, but are there any other ways we could work it out that every, that they get the square footage that they want, but maybe it doesn't, you know, make that side of our house the only sunny side, you know, so dark. And I mean, we're losing, we're losing the entire view that way. We need that, but it's the, it's really the sunlight that's like.
Okay, thank you.
Hard, hard work.
And, sorry, one last thing, is it sounds like the, that back portion is the, the portion that is tallest.
Tallest, yeah.
Can I just say one thing? The, observing the field conditions, there's also a very large tree there. And, and I would make the argument that if you really wanted a completely accurate shadow study, you'd have to include the tree. Because with or without this addition along the sunlight, it's still, it's still blocking the sunlight.
The shade, yeah.
So there, there's an argument to be made. I'm not suggesting anybody cut down a tree. But what I am saying is that the loss of sunlight isn't as significant as it may appear when you factor in the shade from the tree. Because it's a very large tree.
I mean, I.
Very large tree.
Okay, well, that's enough. Thank you, thank you for comments.
Hi. Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi. My name is Phil Keating off of Ralph Street.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Just barely. You're really muddy.
I'm a neighbor across the street, Joe, and we, we. Uh, we're called, we're a lot of trees. And I think it's more, more active, I will, yes.
We can't hear you.
We can try dialing in without the video or something.
Who's it?
No, I mean, it's Phil.
Phil, please. That's Phil.
Phil? Oh, okay, question.
It's my, it's our neighbor Phil. I, I can put him on speaker and be like.
We can't, because it has to go through the recording.
Yeah. Hello?
Thank you.
Oh, there he is. Oh, that's good.
That's better. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Please say your name and address.
My name is Dr. Philip Keating. I'm at one Butler Avenue. Sorry about my audio problems. First, I'd like to say that the, I like that you did the solar study, the shadow study, but there are trees that are taller than both of the houses in between the two, in between the two properties. So the idea that the shadow of the proposed addition would substantially change the light impinging on the other house is, at least in the spring, in the summer, in the fall, I think, is, is a bit of, of something that you could model and really get a real number on, first of all. So I think if you, if, if you looked at the trees, you wouldn't be too concerned about a shadow being cast from the proposed addition onto the other house. It's, the, the trees are too tall. Number one. Number two, it doesn't, didn't sound to me like there was a clear understanding of what calculations were requested. It doesn't sound like the bylaw is very, it is an exclusive or.
Yes.
The words, it said thirty-five feet or something else.
The lesser of.
That means one or, that means one or the other, not both.
No, it says the lesser of.
I, I couldn't hear what you yelled at me then.
It says, the bylaw says the lesser of two and a half stories or thirty-five feet.
Yeah, and I didn't hear a clear definition of a half of a story. So I think, I think what needs to happen is, there needs to be clear direction on what calculations you're expecting someone to do. It's certainly not clear from my point of view what, what calculations you're expecting someone to do.
That's their house. I don't see the difference between this.
I do.
This looks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keating.
Yeah, I, I had one more, I had one more comment. As far as I'm concerned, um, as far as I'm concerned, as a homeowner on the street, I would welcome an addition to their house. I think it would help the neighborhood. Uh, they're great neighbors and I look forward to little, little Gordy growing up in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak as well. I'm Butler. I don't know how to, I'm not a very technologically.
Uh, what's John O'Hara?
Yeah.
And what address?
I'm at nine Butler Avenue.
Okay.
And I would like to, I would agree with, um, with Phil on both the trees and also I think the clarity of that, you know, third floor, four-foot wall, I, I think that's very ambiguous. Uh, and I'm all for the house. I think it would improve, uh, the neighborhood. I think also in, in fairness, the house on the corner of Butler and Raymond is certainly, is certainly, it certainly has maxed out its height and also the neighbor at number six, the same. So I think out of fairness to Joe and his family, uh, that he's certainly not exceeding either one of the, the size or height of either one of those houses.
Yeah, so.
And. Yeah, uh, I, I'm in construction as well, and so that discussion about the four-foot knee wall and then the, the bylaws, that, that just really seems very, very confusing, uh, and also not, not very exact. And so I think, you know, my only thought on that is that, you know, that, um, uh, that has to be clarified, um, because it, it doesn't seem to be very clear. Even, even your, your partner on the, on the board said it's ambiguous, so. That's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
One, one, one more comment from a resident.
Who's this?
Uh, Josh Kaplan. I'm at seventeen Butler.
Okay.
Uh, I can't speak to the, the technical stuff that, uh, that John did, uh, but I can just echo that, you know, I feel like someone else said, I think the, the construction would increase the property value, uh, of all the houses on seventeen Butler, so in that respect, I would certainly be for it and, um, yeah, I'm, 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 I would, would back that decision to, 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 for that, let them build.
Thank you. I, I, I.
I'm sorry, uh, myself the same at nine. I'm, I'm for, I'm for them as well, so just, okay.
Thank you. I, I think that, you know, one of the challenges we have is that the house is in a setback and they're building more mass within the setback. So we have to make a determination whether that increase in mass is more detrimental or injurious than the existing non-conforming structure. So that's what we have to look at. And that's our challenge. I mean, another house may be taller, but if it's not in the setback, it's not an issue. And that's the challenge. It's because it's in the setback. We don't care about the other sides, just the sections in the setback. So if there was a way to do the second story or the third story or how many stories there are, and it didn't go the full depth of the current house and was on the line with the setback, then it wouldn't be the same issue. Because it, and it probably would have the same impact on the shading, but it wouldn't matter because it would be on the setback line rather than into the setback with more mass, so.
You know, even if you took off the roof, you would still have more than two and a half stories. I think that, that part of the bylaw is very confusing. And I think it, it might get, if it went into court, it might get, it might cause a problem. I think it's not clear, uh, and I think the way it's being interpreted tonight is one way to look at it. I don't agree with it. I mean, if I were, I'm not sitting on this one because I'm still an alternate again, but I would have issue with that.
With which interpretation?
Pardon?
With the interpretation granted applicants or with the interpretation by the law?
No, with, I lost written. I, I think they're probably would be okay.
Sarah, can we, how would you feel about getting an opinion from town council on the meaning of the wording of the bylaw?
Yeah, that's what I've learned to do.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to get clarity.
But we need more, we need more information, yeah. Because we're not provided with anything that tells us dimensions.
Sections and calculations.
Sections and calculations.
What kind of, we want square footage calculations?
Yeah.
James, what calculations would we need?
Yes.
Well, you could do volume, you could do square footage. Uh, but the sections are vertical slices of the building, so you could see the height of the knee walls in question. You could see the stair wall.
Okay.
What exactly are you looking for, though? That is not clear. Well, to find the two and a half story versus three and the ratios that Brian was talking about with respect to allowable proportions.
It's not volume, square foot.
It does exceed two and a half stories. That's obvious by looking at it. You have the garage level, the next level, and the bedroom level.
And with the definition of a four-foot knee wall, yes.
So, I don't know what you're looking for in the way of dimensions. It does exceed two and a half stories.
Well, I was responding to.
But Jim, our problem is, is that the architect is disagreeing with us, so we need the information from the architect to understand why he thinks it complies.
He's saying.
I don't know why he's disa-, is he disagreeing that it's not two and a half, more than two and a half stories?
I'm not disagreeing with Jim.
He says it's only, you're saying it's only two and a half stories. Is that correct, Mr. Stein?
I mean, I would argue that, yes. I mean, I, I'm agreeing more with Jim.
Jim's saying it isn't two and a half stories.
No, it's three stories. It's obvious looking at it, it's three stories.
He gets that, oh, I thought he said it wasn't three stories.
No, no. I mean, it's obvious that it's three stories. But it can, it can exceed two and a half stories, as long as it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet.
No, it's the lesser of the two. Whichever is lesser.
Right, which is the third, less than thirty-five feet.
No, it's, it's, it's either two and a half stories or thirty-five feet, whichever, the lesser of the two's.
Which in this case, it's less than thirty-five feet.
I think that's very confusing, I'm sure.
If two and a half stories is less than thirty-five feet, you can't go to thirty-five feet.
There, you're measuring apples and oranges, stories and feet. That's not a consistent measurement.
That's what the bylaw is.
I don't disagree with you.
What's that?
I don't disagree with you.
No, I think there's, the bylaw is confusing and I would think that, um, it would be looked at differently by maybe other people.
So we'll get an opinion from town council that will tell us. We'll get an opinion from town council that will advise us on the best way.
I think that would be smart to get information from council.
Yeah.
But I think to look for dimensions, it's obvious it's more than two and a half stories.
I think based on the wording in the bylaw, we need the sections so that we understand the height, so we understand.
Understand his argument.
How the bylaw is applied.
Right, that's the whole point, yeah.
Yeah, we can give you the square footages.
And the sections? And the sections?
I mean, the sections are, I mean, it's very similar to the elevation, but yeah, I can, I can tell you the square footage of the levels, right, and then versus that upper floor, what it is below that. That's what it's, that's what I was talking about. That's what I've done with Paul in the past.
Brian, on. Can I make another comment, please?
Who is this?
This is Phil Kitting from one Butler.
Yeah, this will be your last chance for a comment. We usually allow people to speak once, but go ahead.
Okay. What I said before was, I think what needs to happen is that the specific data that you're looking for from the architect needs to be clarified.
Thank you, Mr. Kitting.
Otherwise, you won't get what it is you're looking for, and he will be, I mean, he'll be, you know, bring me a rock, and it'll be the wrong-sized rock, so I think that needs to be clarified.
Thank you, Mr. Kitting.
I agree with you. I think that's what we're trying to do right now.
So, my question was, where it says on the south elevation, where it says the top plate, does that mean that that's the start of the third, what does that mean, the start of the third floor?
That's where the roof springs from.
The roof springs from there.
So, it's six feet, that's the knee wall.
So, how about I propose, how about I talk to Paul to see what he wants? He's essentially the enforcement officer here with this.
No, no, we're going to go to town council, get an interpretation of the bylaw, which might not always agree with what Paul is saying.
Wow.
Well.
We just have to.
Well, yeah, he can follow that or not. Correct.
Yeah, I was just saying.
He has to follow the, whatever's in a special permit.
Well, no, but the definition here, and how he, how he determines that half-story, and how he wants the calc determined.
Well, you certainly can confirm with him on that.
Because I've done that in the past with him on other things.
I think it's smart. He's the code enforcement officer. Let him.
That's fine, but.
Figure that out.
I mean, it could be a little bit of a different situation if it was not a pre-existing nonconformity that he was applying on before, but.
Right. Well, and the problem is, because this is split level. It's not like, so you have to look at each section separately.
Well, that's the question. I don't necessarily agree. It's, that's why I'd rather have, well, Paul and/or town council's opinion on that.
Okay. So. Is there any member of the public who hasn't spoken who'd like to speak on this application?
I have, I spoke, but could do, would I be allowed one more thing?
One more?
That would be great. I just, again, I think if any of, if any of the neighbors were sitting in our house and knew the light restrictions that are real, they would take a second opinion. But I want to, again, the only reason I came here is to see if the architect had any other options of, like, for that three-story, you know, wall that's going up. Is there any way we could soften that, and it could still get there? That's all I was here, to try to do that. I, you know, I want them to have the bill, but I just wanted that opportunity, and I didn't, I don't think I ever got that opportunity. And to be honest, they had an architect that called me that I know very well, eight months ago, and said, which, you know, I want you to know we're doing this for, you know, for Joe and Elise, and we'll show you, you know, the plans. We want the guys to all be involved so it goes smooth and everything. And, you know, I was giving plans on Monday. That doesn't give us any time. And also, I, you know, I was having the impression yesterday, the architect was going to call, we could talk about that. I don't want to design their house.
Thank you.
Just worried about that.
Right, thank you. I, I think that we're heading towards a continuance, so that gives you more time to talk.
And I hate that, but I don't know what else to do.
So, is the applicant agreeable to a continuance to July?
Wow.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Brian, can you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, yeah.
I can't see anybody else when the screen is.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to you.
Yeah, great. So, are you ready for me to make a motion? At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the special hearing, the public hearing, to July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM, and extend the period for writing the decision to October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the application of Brian Stein, BBS Design Inc., on behalf of Joseph and Elise Campanelli, for a special permit under section seven point two, twelve point five, and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw, under other relief as may be necessary, to raise the existing non-conforming structure in the flood zone one foot, add additional levels for additional living space, and adjust the footprint, resulting in a slightly greater encroachment into the side setback at four Butler Ave, Assessors Map number one, block number thirty-three, and District B, filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
James seconds. Any discussion? Vote. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
James?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. Yes. Are they good? Sorry, I'm doing up the continuance so that the property owner is consigning. You can just put your name and then sign it.
Yep.
This is really weird. The bylaw is weird. Well, I mean, considering this is a new one, but that's bad. It's not the lesser, because.
Yeah, this one is fine, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Okay. And now move to one seventeen School Street. What? What'd you say, Jim?
I said, are they zooming from School Street?
Yes.
Are they here?
Well, Brian's representing.
The Brian's, three mark.
Oh, got it.
Christopher Day is on Zoom. Yeah, they're on Zoom. I will open the public hearing for the application of Brian Stein, BBS Design Inc., on behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day, for a special permit under sections four point two E five, two point zero, and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw, under other relief as may be necessary, to install a ten-foot by fifteen-foot soaker prefabricated pool, raised a couple of feet above grade with a locking cover and fence installed between the driveway and patio and along the property line at one seventeen School Street, Assessors Map number forty, lot number two in District A, filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Brian, are you presenting the project?
I am. I will share my screen again. That's a great job. Can you see this site plan?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, we are one seventeen School Streets. A few of you were there last night. We have the existing house up, just off School Street, driveway running along the side, coming around to the back. They have a drive-under garage currently. The, let me go to this next plan here, just clarity. In general, just to run through everything, we, we've been through the planning board, a few meetings there regarding a drainage system, since we are in the groundwater protection zone, and we were over the fifteen percent impervious, which required us to do a drainage system, which was approved. Just in general, we're expanding the driveway to allow them a little bit more turnaround space than they have now, which is, you know, a number of you saw, was pretty tight yesterday. We are proposing a small, around eight by fourteen, soak pool, which I know you're familiar with, I believe. It's a precast concrete pool that's kind of craned in and plopped into the ground, more or less.
This one we approved at one sixty-eight Bridge Street. Okay, go ahead, Brian, sorry.
Okay, no problem. We have some significant existing screening, as you saw yesterday, and some significant proposed screening going in that's around the pool itself. We have a generous-sized pervious patio that is going in along with the grill area, and then, as you'll see next month, this party or pool barn, or pool house, whatever you want to call it. We have some stepping stones, blue stone stepping stones out in the lawn here to kind of continue the patio. But again, mainly we're here for the pool. Again, pretty small footprint, roughly eight by fourteen. It's a couple feet out of the ground. The soak pools themselves have, you know, a few options for a light inside. The pool equipment will be over here behind the future pool house, so screened from basically everyone's view, given the fence that runs along between them and the neighbor. So, again, it's pretty, pretty standard pool equipment that you're all familiar with. So, again, it really, it won't be seen from any other property. There's, you know, again, significant screening here, there's significant screening in the rear of their lot, and then significant screening on the, on the southern side as well. I think that's pretty much it on my part, in terms of, in terms of the pool.
I don't see any type of a lighting plan.
The, the pool has a light in it.
Are there not going to be any lights on the patio?
We have Matt Ulrich here tonight, who is the landscape architect, who could, who could address that.
Hey, folks. Matt Ulrich from the Ulrich Landscape Collaborative. So, we don't have a lighting plan as of yet. As Brian mentioned, there's going to be like an interpool light. We'll probably be doing some pathlights would be it, which would be some, you know, downward-facing, basically ground-mounted lights, so nothing, there would definitely be dark skies compliant. Just a safely light, you know, probably the pathways and the patio.
What about the fence? I don't see that. I'm not sure I see that depicted on the plan.
It's on the drawing.
Where?
Says which is.
No, they say there's going to be one between the driveway and the patio, and I don't see that.
It goes across the driveway.
Where?
Right here.
It doesn't say? There's nothing that labels something as a fence?
It sure looks like the same. It's a line going across from the corner of the house to where the fence coming down the property line enters a right angle, and it cuts over to the corner of the house. I believe that's what the fence line is. Am I correct?
Correct. I don't know, Brian. I have a more updated plan that shows fence like going along the backside of the grill.
Yep.
Returning to the house. I can't, this isn't zoomed in enough. I can't see it.
That's not all what we have.
Over that way. Left.
It's right here.
Yeah. Do you have to share map?
It's not labeled.
Yeah, can you, can you enable me to share my screen?
Can you enable me to share?
Or there, and here. But no, they're saying it's going to be between the front and the back.
I can show you the current landscape plan if somebody wants to allow me to share.
Oh, sorry.
Is it settled?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
It's right here.
There we go. Okay. Everybody see this okay? So, I think this is a slightly updated version of what you were looking at. So, you can clearly see here, coming in off the corner of the, everybody see this okay? I guess we should start. Okay. There's a gate right here, then this fence continues up through here, comes back across, comes down the back, and then links up with the existing fence that's already here, and then we return back into this corner of the pool house.
There's also a cover that goes on top of the soak pool, in addition to the pool fence that's enclosing everything. Usually, that's either a retractable cover or a roll-up, kind of lockable cover that goes on top.
How deep is the pool?
They're only five feet.
So, I see the fence along the hedge, and I see the gate. And then where does it connect to the fence at the bottom?
Look like it doesn't.
It doesn't.
So, it's here. Here. Then this is all existing fence along the property line, existing fence.
They added it in.
And then this is the fence in the back.
So, it's connecting into the barn that doesn't exist yet.
Yeah.
This is the barn that hasn't been built. Yeah, see?
Yep.
Yeah, it's still, it's not this. Yeah, I think, hasn't been built. Okay. Other questions of the board?
Does the pool barn come later?
It's my understanding an application was submitted today, so I have some concerns about approving a pool before we've looked at the barn, particularly where the fence is connecting into the barn.
Well, they could just extend the fence all the way to the other fence line if the barn didn't get approved, right on the same path it's going through.
Yeah, but we would.
That could be a condition.
Where's the fence connected to the barn?
I mean, I would just say they pursued their own risk of the, of the pool house not being built, and you'd have to connect the fence. It's not true.
Yeah.
It's just dimensionalized.
I mean, we always approve pools on the condition that all the security measures are in place anyway, so.
And I would just make it clear, you know, to the applicant, that we've not approved the pool building, whatever it is, and, you know, that we don't know if we will until that application comes before us. So, if they want to proceed with the pool alone and wait, you know, for us to hear the application on the building, I, that would be at their risk to do that, I would think. I don't know. What does everyone else think?
That makes sense. I really don't think they're going to build the patio or the pool without, they're not going to start that construction. Given the sequence of construction, they're probably going to pour the foundation for the pool barn first.
All tenements will need to be in place anyway.
Yeah, but doesn't, doesn't the pool barn affect the overall usage of the pool?
It may, yep. But that still has to be approved. All I'm saying is I don't think they'd start the construction of the pools or patio.
If we approve a special permit on the pool, they can start the pool now.
But they don't have to.
For a practical matter, if they want to build a barn, I don't think they would. I mean, isn't that true, Brian?
Then why wouldn't we wait and do the whole thing together?
Well, because, because it's before you, and I think, I think the only thing that is really in question here is the fence, and you can condition that to fully enclose that area whether the building is built or not.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is he the reason why we're not?
Why this wasn't submitted as one package?
Well, it wasn't clear that we needed to submit for the barn at the time when we submitted for the pool.
So will the barn be a variance or a special permit?
Special permit, because it's a, I've been to town council on this. It's a nonconforming lot, and the case law is not clear whether a new, it's a new nonconformity because it's a new accessory structure, but case law is not clear whether it's a special permit or a variance, and we have historically issued special permits. And he thinks we're.
It's definitely not, it's definitely not a variance. The only reason it would have been a variance, like you said, Sarah, is if we were over the lot coverage.
Well, and, and the new structure would be within the setback requirements.
It is.
It is, yes.
The new structure is fully conforming.
Yeah. The issue is coverage.
But it's not, so we're, we're under that.
Well, the paperwork we have shows an issuance with coverage, so yeah, we have, yeah. It just needs to be adjusted.
Yeah, the surveyor's was an error, the civil engineer's plan is, is correct.
Yeah.
Which was approved by the planning board.
Well, they're not approving the pool, they're approving.
No, but.
Drainage.
Yes. Which was based on that lot coverage.
So any questions, other questions from the board on the pool?
I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
Any member of the public who wants to speak on this application with respect to the pool?
I would like to ask a question through you, Mr. Day, because it concerns the pool. Is he a son of Mr. Day of Manchester?
I think so.
Yes?
Uh, no.
No.
My son of Mr. Day of Manchester? No, I'm not.
Okay, because we have a pool motor that we closed in, in ground four, and we give it for free, so. Thank you.
Wrong answer.
He gets it happy if he wants it.
Anyway. Okay.
Okay.
So we want to move forward with the application as before? I think so. Okay. As the pool only. Yes. I move to close a public hearing and approve the application of Brian Stein, BDS Design Inc. on behalf of Nicole and Christopher Day for a special permit under sections four point two E five, two point zero, and twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to install a sofa prefabricated pool approximately ten feet by fifteen feet, raised a couple of feet above grade with a locking cover, one LED light within the pool, a pervious patio and fence between the driveway and patio connecting to the fence along the property line at 117 School Street. Assessors map number forty, lot number two in District A filed with the town clerk on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed pool will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located, and the requirements and conditions under section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The pool and patio are located as depicted on the plan of land prepared by Jero's Land Surveying dated five, ten, twenty-three. The landscaping installed is substantially consistent with the landscape plan one prepared by Ulrich Landscaping, and any lighting will be low voltage LED lights, including one inside the pool. A fence is installed between the driveway and patio and along, and, and connect to the property line to conform with the Manchester by the Z zoning bylaw and Massachusetts Building Code. The pool contains a locking cover, and total coverage by structures and impervious surfaces shall not exceed thirty percent. Do I have a second?
Second.
John seconds. Any discussion? Vote. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Approved.
Approved.
Sarah approves. Who would like to write this? I'll write it.
Come on, guys, step up, step up.
I'll review it.
Okay. Okay. So you're all set on the pool?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrative matters. Did people have a chance to review the minutes from May seventeenth?
No, I did not review them.
Okay.
She didn't review, I didn't review.
They came out maybe last week. Okay, apparently not.
I'm sorry.
I got lost in me now, I did not review that. I will review it by the next meeting.
When reviewed the meetings from May seventeenth?
Awesome.
Did you review them?
Yes.
Oh, good job.
Did you check the spelling punctuation?
No.
Or the column to column.
Okay.
The Catherine How test?
Oh.
She says it could be good.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the status of decisions, and within that category, I wish to discuss One Dexter Lane, the appeal. I have received two letters, well, I received two pieces. One is a request by the law firm representing T. Philip and Cynthia Cominos that says, with respect to their property at One Dexter Lane, Manchester by the C, the Cominoses hereby notify the Manchester by the C zoning board of appeals of their desire to withdraw slash abandon their special permit granted under sections six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw to change the use of the property from a two family to a three family filed with the town clerk on February second, twenty twenty-three. The Cominoses have just sold their property at One Dexter Lane as is, as the two family use, and as such, the special permit is no longer needed. Second piece of material received was a notice of voluntary dismissal filed with the land court by Benjamin Timman, the attorney for C Dexter LLC, and Ronald Carterelli, saying that the plaintiffs hereby dismiss this action pursuant to Mass. R. Civ. P.
Rule of Civil.
A one I. I, Benjamin Timman, certify that foregoing was served on all council of record via email and e-file portal on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions?
Is that Blossom Lane?
What?
The timing was, is that Blossom Lane?
No.
No, that was not a big major.
We just got Timman, do you mean?
Yes, it's the same attorney. But he's not the one that was on the public hearing. But he apparently was representing him in court.
On appeal?
Yeah, on the appeal. So the, the appeal has been dismissed, and the property owners have asked us to withdraw slash abandon their special permit.
Is that the big?
Yeah.
Maybe do a tour.
Remember, we were all going to buy it.
We just talked about it, we had to wait until the closing. We couldn't do anything.
So someone bought the properties.
The property closed on June second.
James, I missed that one, James.
Yeah.
Wait, so do we need the new owners to ask us to withdraw? Does the company travel with the, with the house?
I don't think so, because this was a condition of the voluntary dismissal in court, that the special permit be withdrawn. And it was done, this was, this was sent to us June eighth. No, we thought originally that was going to happen, and apparently they don't want it to happen that way.
Just wanted gone.
Yeah. So can I make a motion?
Yes.
You don't think we did any order with the house? I mean, I'm sure they probably agree, because it looks like it from the lawsuit.
The, the sale was contingent on the fact that it was going to be a two family, not a three family. Because the, the special permit wasn't final because it was appealed.
So it's never in effect.
So it's not binding on the new owners, I, I think.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
It's never granted here.
At the request of Natasha Winter of Dane Torpey Law Firm, on behalf of T. Philip and Cynthia Cominos, I move to accept their request to withdraw slash abandon the special permit granted on February second, twenty twenty-three, under section six point one point two and seven point five point two of the zoning bylaw to change the use of the property from a two family to a three family at One Dexter Lane, assessors map number thirty-six, lot number eleven, and District C, filed with town clerk on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Based on a finding, they notified the board that the property has been sold as a two family use, so the special permit is no longer needed, and a notice of voluntary dismissal of the appeal of the special permit by CN Dexter LLC and Ronald Carterelli was filed with the land court on June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, seconds.
You can do it.
Any discussion? Take a vote. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Approved.
James?
Yes.
Catherine? And Sarah vote yes. And I'll figure out what. I have to write up and file. Okay.
No one home.
Okay, I'm asking good questions.
You ever stop being a lawyer?
The, the next. The next item on the agenda is the, to review and vote on the three zoning bylaw warrant articles for special town meeting on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, related to the zoning bylaw.
Yes.
Did people have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
I reported on ones.
And were there any concerns? The one good piece that's in there is it moves the special permit expiration from two years to three years, like we thought they'd done in November.
We already don't have the power to grant a use variance, right?
Correct, that's correct.
They're just making it very clear.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Do we, is, is this really, is it really a criminal offense?
What?
This is, there's a.
Three hundred dollars?
Criminal disposition? Isn't it, wouldn't it be civil? Is it really a criminal?
They have both, they have criminal and noncriminal.
I know, but they're the same, and is there actually a criminal?
I don't know.
Like, can you actually, this seems very civil to put, I, anyway. It might not be a problem, it might be great. I just didn't know if that's actually a thing we could do.
But we don't do it.
It's pretty in there, but.
Enforcement officer does it.
If people really want to pursue it, then they can get to that point, but how often do they want to pursue it?
So you're saying we can't arrest people?
We wouldn't.
Citizens arrest!
Brian wants a badge. I can run the cost of.
Anything else?
I mean, no, it's, I, I will honestly say it's hard to compare without a comparison, but that's not your fault, so.
And the large section is, is for planning board stuff.
What?
If, if you look at twelve point five point four, you'll see that the, of course, they've moved the sections again. After twelve point five point three.
It's not in the, in the existing, oh.
Proposed new bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah. You'll see that the conditions, special permit conditions have changed slightly. I mean, it's pretty much the same, I guess, all different numbers.
To that point, Catherine, hopefully there will be some narrative at the town meeting.
With like highlighting what's changed?
And the, the twelve point five point five is, I had them say, when appropriate, the zoning board of appeals refers, referrals are done to other boards. Originally, they, but there's some wording in here that's saying it's required, that makes me a little nervous.
When appropriate sounds better.
Yeah, because oftentimes we don't need to refer them to other boards, but that makes sense.
It's not our responsibility to know whether, I mean, I know a lot of us do know whether it needs to go to another board, but it's really not our responsibility to.
I think what they're trying, I think what they're trying to do is get the boards talking together more, and then if it's questionable, you send it to another board and have them determine whether or not they want to say anything about it. Select Board does that a lot. They send things out to lots of different departments, and half the time the people say, not our problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Try to get away from any heavy lifting as possible.
Right. So the site plan review doesn't impact us. Oh, there's a new section, the request for reasonable accommodation. Remember, we had that?
I think that's great.
Yeah. The only problem is it requires us to keep separate records, and it doesn't have to be a public hearing. But it can be. Okay, so do we support, and this other thing is just changing the numbers so that they're right.
No.
And then the second one is if, if Article three, what happened in November is they removed the planning board site plan review from the bylaws, and then they didn't take action on later articles.
With the intention of putting it in.
It included the site plan review again. So they've included the site plan review in this section twelve, but if section twelve doesn't pass, then Article four says, let's reinstitute the existing site plan review that we inadvertently deleted in November.
I see, so if question three passes, they'll pass over question four.
Yeah.
Site plan review is only for the planning board, it's not for us?
We don't do site plan reviews.
Oh, we do site visits, and those aren't in here, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's just part of, the site visits are part of our process.
Yep. Okay.
Site, site plan reviews are, you review the plan and you might, you might impose conditions, but you can't refuse it. Can't deny it. But you can impose conditions, okay.
That sounds, oh, wait, I thought I was just making sure.
Whereas we can deny things. Does that, are people willing to support these?
Absolutely.
I think so.
If you say so.
Can I make a motion that the zoning board of appeals supports the three zoning bylaw warrant articles?
Is you here to, to say there are some.
In, in, in our special town meeting on June twenty-eighth. Everyone who agrees, raise your hand.
Are you going to have a town meeting to tell them?
Probably. Ron has called me and asked us to look at them and said it would be helpful if we supported that.
So there's how many questions, three questions?
Three.
One of the votes?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, no, yes, pass over yes.
Yes, pass over yes.
That's articles, but there's more articles than that in the town meeting.
Like the zoning?
This is the three for the zoning, and then they're going to do more in November.
Trying to chip away at the ones that didn't go through.
Yeah, and.
In that big ugly meeting.
Yeah.
It's basically taking off in little bites as opposed to trying to.
Well, and I think that the, the stuff that was passed in November was somewhat piecemeal, and they're trying to pull it together better because it kind of went out of control.
What's needed for a quorum? Is there a minimum number of, a ten?
Hundred, I believe. Is that right for a special town meeting?
Yeah.
Mr. Select Board?
I never thought about it.
So my question is if no one chose.
It may be higher.
I have news, there's going to be a lot of people there. I wouldn't worry about the quorum. It's, the school.
We're doing the school budget.
The school budget is going to, is going to pack the house. It's all John's fault.
The school budget and the ladder truck. And.
And the cola increased on the.
Salary budget because the union, two of the union contracts are settled.
And some overtime for the.
Sounds like a fun meeting.
It's gonna be fantastic.
You gonna be there?
There're gonna be cookies, child care.
There'll be, uh, there is gonna be candy.
They do have food at the school committee meetings, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and
The finance committee has food too.
Anything else that needs to come before us?
No.
I've got a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question before? Yeah, we, uh, this is James's last meeting.
Oh, that's right. Thank you so much, James.
Congratulations on taking your service.
We're going to really miss you.
It's nothing personal.
Yeah.
Do you have anyone lined up to replace him?
We have an application from Robert Stott, but
He hasn't heard anything.
Well, nothing's gone before the Select Board.
So he's gotta, but he's, does he want, do you wanna meet him first or?
I don't think I need to.
So I'll just have Debbie put on.
Well, the, Jim, have you decided what you're doing?
No, because you haven't decided the new applicant. If the new applicant becomes a permit member,
Yeah.
then I can be an alternate.
Okay. So you're gonna stay on as an alternate unless and until we can find somebody to fill your spot?
Yeah, you have to let the clerk know.
Yes, so that, I'll send an email to Debbie Powers tomorrow on the zoning board stuff. I'd done it with the finance committee and she did it, but I hadn't I thought I had done it on the zoning board, but somehow it hasn't appeared, so. Okay.
As I recall from our last meeting, whoever, Jim agrees to that as long as he will not be interviewed.
Yes. And they're not interviewing this year, they're interviewing next year.
Really? So how does this new guy get on?
I had to get grilled when I
A new person.
I got grilled, it was on TV and everything.
A new person.
I had to have a microphone.
I didn't go there, absolutely. I was in your house. I had to walk up that. That seems ar, that seems arbitrary. Some get interviewed and some don't.
You could like ask me my name.
No, new, new members do.
Right.
But they, historically, they haven't renewed, they haven't interviewed people renewing.
Before renewing, that's true, because I was
And next year, they're gonna start that.
Okay.
The, for the, they won't do it for the first renewal, they'll do it for the second and successive year.
They'll open up your file. It appears that you've voted.
Your, your decisions have been appealed seventy-seven times.
Many of your decisions were.
Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I move to adjourn the meeting second.
Oh, a favor?
Aye.
Aye.